Have a good meeting.
Hi Joe.
Alright, I think we're on. Seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. McKnight, would you like to read the invocation please?
Sure, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening and ask for your blessing upon us as we discuss rural business, but also we thank you, Lord, for all the citizens of our town that have been so faithful in trying to keep each other safe and looking out for each other, and we pray, Heavenly Father, that you continue to be with those who are protecting us, our first responders, our police. Thank you, Lord, for those that are working so hard on our behalf, our employees, sewer and water employees. We thank you for them and pray, Heavenly Father, that you continue to help us as we support them. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Alright, time for pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the United States, under God, and to the Father. Well, that wasn't one of our better ones.
No, that's because that's pretty bad.
Alright, roll call Fred.
Mr. Crouch. Mrs. Deal.
Present.
Mr. Erickson.
Present.
Mr. Darius.
Present.
Mr. Sinkovitz. Mr. Penner.
Alright, any citizen comments Fred when you're in?
None.
None. Okay, alright, well, we have some friends here from the Launchpad who are just either heads just opened up or is about to open up in downtown Newville and want to discuss their future plans and answer any questions. So, I know Leah very well since we graduated together. And Joe's wife, your name is?
Jess.
Jess, I knew it began with a J, and you teach at Mount Rock, right?
I do.
Alright, that's what I thought, and the middle one?
I'm Bethany, Bethany Wheeler.
Bethany Wheeler, right? Okay, very good, alright ladies, floor is yours.
Alright, so we thought we'd just tell you a little bit about how we got here and make it short and sweet, and then Bethany's gonna, she's the program director, she's gonna tell you a little bit about the program, and then Jess is gonna tell you a little bit about the daily life and things that we can provide here every day because she's the live-in house parent of the group, and I'm the executive director, yeah, and Jeff, and Jeff, yeah. So, we're here really because as anybody that works with kids, teachers know it, you know, anybody that works with kids sees that not all kids are treated the way they need to be, you know, and a lot of them, in working with kids, Bethany and I are therapists, and for the past several years, like through our careers, we were working with kids through, that were referred to us through Children in Youth Services and Cumberland County probation, so these are kids that really needed help because their parents were troubled. It's not troubled kids, it's usually troubled parents, as you often know, you know. So, we were working with this population, and I was an independent living coordinator. The independent living program is part of the Foster Care Act. It's actually a constitutional right of children to have a home up until the age of 21. It's a constitutional right, and that's written very clearly in the Constitution. But because there are no places to house those children, that constitutional right is regularly violated. So, in our work with Bethany and I, we could see that our children were ending up often homeless, they were ending up abused, the girls were ending up living with older men, they were often taken advantage of because when you don't have parents, I mean, I can't even imagine being on my own at 18. So, these people, a lot of times, they grew up in foster care, and they, a lot of them actually do great. It just, we would really like to kind of help them out a little bit because as, if you've never looked in a child's face and dropped them on the street, you don't know how, as a Christian, you worry about answering about that. Like, I was doing things that I worried that someday I would have to answer to because putting children on a street and watching them be harmed, which is what was happening, it just broke my heart, and I knew inside myself that that was not okay. And there came a point where we decided, Bethany and I were coworkers, so we were seeing very much the same things. Many of our kids died, some of them committed suicide, some of them, one of mine was murdered by an adult. So, we just really felt like we had to do something to help these kids because I think everyone sitting here is a Christian, and that was really our biggest motivator, that we just really couldn't live with it, like, I couldn't live with it. So, I started telling all my best Christian friends, Bethany being one of them, like, I wouldn't shut up for five years. I told every Christian friend I had, "Look what's happening, like, help me, help me, help me," and finally, they did. So, Rob Frye, who isn't here tonight because he's a busy lawyer in town, but some of you guys might know him, he was the first friend that helped because he had the financial capacity to do so, and we did not, we're social workers. So, that's not usually a very lucrative job. So, Rob helped, and we bought, we watched this building for years and years and years, we watched it, and when it got to a point where we could afford it, we bought it. And we've been here fixing it up ever since, and we're just really trying to build a home for those kids so that they have somewhere to go, and it's a short term, you know, they'll be okay, most of them are very likable. Wait till you meet them, I mean, they're just like really sweet kids. But we just really wanted to give them a place to transition that we, that we had, you know, and my life was here in Newville, and I knew, I knew that Newville would be supportive because I grew up here, and I knew that there's still a big sense of community, and I knew that there's a lot of loving, loving decent people in Newville. And our kids are blue collar kids, they're not kids that even dream of going to college, most of them, and I thought they'd be really comfortable here, and not, they're rural, I mean, most of our kids are rural poor, you know, they're generational poverty, rural poor. And I think if you live in Newville, you know some people like that. So, I was really hoping that we could bring them to a place, offer them a lot of support with 24-hour care, and just really help them move on to the next level, and we really hope some of them stay in Newville and really build a life here. So, that's where it came from. I'm gonna let Bethany tell you a little bit about the program that we've built so that you can see what we're doing and how it's safe and take it from there.
Alright, so what, what we are doing, the official name of this type of program that you could find in, like, some of the constitutional documents and things like that, it's called a Supervised Independent Living Program. You might see it like abbreviated S I L. So, again, this is for young adults who are coming out of the foster care system or some kind of county care situation. So, this is not halfway home or rehab placement, it's, you know, that's not what this is designed to be. It's just a supervised independent living placement for kids ages 18 to 23. So, the way our program works, I'll just kind of breeze through a couple of the highlights so that you guys have an understanding of it, and then any questions you might have, we'd love to try to give you some answers. So, the biggest highlight obviously is that we're offering safe and secure housing. It is, obviously, we have 24-hour supervision because we've got our wonderful, wonderful live-in residential supervisors who are here just to kind of build relationships, check in with the guys, help them learn some of those daily living skills. We also have a security system with our camera system, so we have the entire outside of the building monitored, and we've already spoken with the police department about sharing access to those cameras in any ways that they would, would find that helpful. And so, the next thing is we have trauma-informed care, which means that the way our buildings are structured, set up, and the way all of our staff is trained is that we're really sensitive to the fact that these are kids who have been in traumatic situations, and we're learning more and more from neuroscience to how trauma affects the brain development and how it affects the way young people react to certain things. So, we just really want to have an environment that's sensitive to that and helps not just be sensitive to it, but helps them learn how to deal with that, how to heal, how to move forward in life in a healthy way and be a productive citizen, which kind of leads to our next point. Obviously, employment is our number one highlight for our program. We want our guys to be working, it is not a place for them to come and just hang out and play video games, we're not even allowing video games. But, yes, we've, we've seen that that can be a bit of a distraction for our guys. So, we are gonna help them with job skills, soft skills, interview skills, all of that, try to get them in and working, and that's just another just wonderful benefit of Newville. There really are a lot of jobs in this area in terms of all the warehouses nearby that they can get to and have decent employment. But also education, like Leah mentioned, a lot of these kids have never dreamed that they'd be able to go to college, but some are so capable and so apt for that, so we want to help them realize those skills and get kids further education or vocational training. We've spoken to a lot of Newville business owners that might be looking for apprentices and things like that, so we'd love to connect our guys with some of those opportunities. Again, just kind of trying to help them find where their skillset are and get them working, get them on their feet so that they can be independent and be giving back to their communities. And that's kind of also one of the other points of our program would be, we call it enrichment opportunities, but a big part of that is community service. We want, we're here in Newville, we've received so much wonderful support from, from this community, and we want to be a place that gives back. So, all of our guys will be doing community service in different ways until they get a job, and then even once they're employed, you know, we'll be doing different things, whether it's once a month or once a week or whatever, opportunities we can set up with some of the local places and local churches so that they're learning how to give back and learning valuable skills, like, snow shoveling is a great skill, you gotta have that. You wanna own a home someday, and so you might as well learn how to do that here and by, by helping give back to community members who maybe can't get out and do that for themselves. So, that's a big component of our program. We want to teach them the value of community and serving others and what that can do for a community as a whole. And then kind of our last piece in our program is also the independent living skills. Again, as we mentioned, a lot of our guys have not had stable home environments, they haven't had parents to teach them basic life skills, and so a big part of our program is kind of identifying where those gaps are, maybe they are great at cooking, but they do not clean well. So, we want to help teach them how to clean or teach them how to cook or different things like that, just making sure that they understand good budgeting skills. We, one of our board members, Andrea Green, she does financial literacy at the high school, and she's also going to be doing that in our building with our guys as well to make sure that they have those money management skills, which again are so important for helping them get out kind of into life on their own. So, that was kind of a lot of information to throw at you, but I just wanted to kind of give you those highlights so you know what they're going to be doing when they're here and answer any questions you might have about that portion, and then Jess will kind of tell you a little bit about day-to-day life.
Do you have a mentorship program?
Yes, that's actually something we've talked a lot, again, we've had wonderful support from the local churches, and a lot of people reached out about wanting to volunteer as mentors. So, that is a big, a big piece of that. In fact, some of those life skill classes will be taught by just community members. Maybe someone says, "Hey, I, I like to cook, I can come in and teach them how to cook," or, you know, "Joe is very talented with woodworking," different things like that. And then while they're teaching some of those skills, they're building those mentoring relationships and opportunities for that.
How about OTJ, on-the-job training?
There's a program locally with ResCare that they'll actually pay three months of the boy's salary back to the employer. So, we've talked to several Newville employers that are kind of like, send them on over because they get the first three months back. So, that gives a boy a chance to like go to try to be a chimney sweep and see if he likes that. And at the end of the three months, a state program, and it's easily accessible through an office in Carlisle. So, they, they could come out, they can work for Highland Tire, they can work for Truck Stop Supply, they can work, that's who we've talked to, we've talked to the people that they can work for and get that, that three months paid back. At the end of the three months, they're willing, they can hire that boy on, or they can say, "No, thank you, this didn't work out for us," and we move on. So, the on-the-job training and getting the boys working is our number one goal, that is it. We're not even, we're not really focusing on counseling as much as one might think, we're focusing on moving forward because we know with trauma that you can move forward, but you need help. So, the work, the work is really truly the number one thing, and every boy that will be here, you can't come here if you can't work, that's a requirement, you must be able to work full-time. And if you don't stay full-time employed, we ask you to leave because we are, we're a professional place, that's what we are.
That kind of limits it when you say full-time, what if, what if someone needs, needs, would want to mentor somebody for 20 hours a week or 30 hours a week, that would be out of, out of your domain, right?
Oh, no, you could do that.
Yeah, full-time would be for the, the young men living here, they have to be working full-time. But yeah, in terms of people volunteering as mentors or things like that, yeah, that'll be totally flexible.
Every decision that's made, you're looking at the people making it, and that's really the best part of this, is that we can work with you, like, we're here to make this work, this is a newer thing, not a lot of people have done it, but we see how much it's needed because we couldn't find it. So, we're here like really open to whatever works, and we, and because it's just us making those decisions, we're confident that we're gonna figure it out, and we really hope you guys help us because we, we can't do it alone, you know, and, but I, we can figure it out, whatever that is. We would never turn you away if you only wanted to mentor 20 hours a week.
Sounds interesting. Touch base with you later.
Okay.
Go ahead Joey.
No, I was just gonna ask when they thought these young men would be moving in, how soon they would be moving in?
Well, we are technically open for referrals now, just to be completely honest, everything with the COVID pandemic has slowed things down. We'd had several tours planned with different county agencies, and they were all canceled because of kind of the uptick in cases in our county right now, so we're kind of hanging tight. I wish I could give you a better answer as to when that's.
Yeah, that's okay. Caution, you know, we, we would really like to, but we don't want to put ourselves in a position that we're bringing, you know, it's just so new, we're gonna let, we're gonna wait until January when the state has recommended that we start to really market again. We're not saying if somebody wouldn't come from the marketing we've done that we wouldn't let them stay, but we're not actively marketing right now just because of safety.
And I know that this is really new, and it's, it's for young men, but in the future, are you looking to have a, a home for young women?
There's, yeah, that's, that's definitely part of our dream is to be able to grow like that. Actually, right now, there is a place that opened up, there's a couple places, one in Harrisburg and one in Carlisle that are doing that for women, and so for right now, that was kind of perfect, we'll kind of tag-team it here, and, but yeah, we'd love to eventually grow to be able to provide, to provide that here as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anybody, or is there any way that somebody under the age of 18 would be housed there? Or is it, do they have to be, do they have to age out of the foster care system?
You can be emancipated, and we would take somebody like around 17, we actually would take a high school student, but we would have to have the support of the county to do so.
Gotcha.
I would guess under 17 would probably be unlikely, but we do know, there's, there's a lot of kids in this area that have present, parents that are incarcerated, who are wonderful kids, and their parent may be in and out of jail. And I think that would, might be a reason we would take a 17-year-old for a few months until the mother or father could get out of jail, so they wouldn't have to leave their school, you know. So, we would be willing to do that, but that's with very heavy county support. The county would very much take care of them differently than the other kids.
What is the primary source of your income and what other sources you could tap into, potential sources?
Our primary source would be county funding, that part of the Constitution that says that they're, they're, they're given this by law, that money is available, and in my work, I could see that it just wasn't being asked for. So, there is a number of funding sources through the county, so that's where we would fund most of it. We've been pleasantly surprised how many donations we've received, like, very surprised. So, that's really helpful too, to make it a little more affordable for the counties, but the, the funding would come through the counties.
So, how, how do you deal with transportation?
So.
Yeah, so that would be, part of the program is written to make sure that we're enabling them to kind of care for themselves in the future. So, we do offer transportation, we would drive them to and from, like, looking for jobs or work, but it's kind of written in a, there is a timeframe on that where we expect them to kind of learn how to find transportation themselves, so whether that's kind of finding a ride share, like, someone to ride with to and from work, or accessing, I know this area doesn't have a lot of public transportation, but we have actually, you're right, there's a few options, so just kind of helping them see what resources are out there and helping them take advantage of those, so that the goal is to really prepare them to be set up well to leave and be able to continue working on their own. We don't want them relying so heavily on transportation with us that when they leave, they're stuck and they can't get to work anymore, so.
One of the program goals is to have them leave with a vehicle, you know, like, one of the things I think a lot of us had the benefit when we were this age is to have a parent that let us stay there and work a part-time job, you know, and most of us, what's the first thing you bought with your money? First thing I bought was a car, right? So, we know that the, and I know, I remember Becky Finkie's car, she was the first one that had one, so I know Randy helped her out because I saw that Cavalier. So, I think that's not a hard thing to talk a boy into buying, you know, so, because they don't have to spend their money on housing, we imagine, and there's been one boy that lived here who that was his priority. So, there's room to park their cars, and we would imagine that the, the kids that we're having will be getting cars pretty quickly because that's what they want, yeah.
You offer them driver ed?
There's a, there's a driver ed person that will come here, it's part of that law that says they're entitled to certain things. One of the things that they're entitled to by law in the Foster Care Act is driver's education paid for by that same funding. So, it, it pays, yeah, it pays until they learn, you know, so it's unlimited funding, and they would get a driver education person that would come here.
You're muted Joey.
Um, there's some garages here in the area that may be able to teach them mechanical things as far as changing oil and, you know, that type of thing, and maybe even have some pretty decent cars that would be available for purchase. You know, I, I think of my Kippen still, and I think of Derek Cutwell, you know, two young men that, you know, have lived in Newville most of their lives, and, you know, they may be able to, you know, help with something like that.
That would be a great mentoring opportunity too, you know, to help, these, like, normal kids don't like adults, you know, like, we work with teenagers and they kind of think we're annoying. These kids aren't like that, these kids literally call me every day, like, they want to call me mom, they want to hang out with me, they want, you know, they're not what you think of. I've never met kids like this until I started working this way. These are kids that want adults and parents so bad that they're heartbroken over it. So, if, if Hip and Steels will let them come and hang out, they would never leave. Like, we're worried they're gonna like sit at the fire hall all day because they're, they're really kids that are just dying for adult companionship and wisdom, you know, and attention, and they just can't get enough of it. So, I really think that it's not, I think that's gonna work out really well.
They refer to you, how do you, how do you come across these young men?
They're referred through the county.
Through the county, all of them?
Yep, yep. I mean, we could have like a church referral, like, if somebody's facing homelessness, we could have a church referral, we've had a couple people call us. I think our big, my biggest fear in this whole thing is turning people away, it scares me because, just because you weren't officially in the foster care system, you could have been in kinship care, the county may not want to pay for you. So, we're really working on getting some grant money so that we don't have to turn anyone away. So, if somebody would come who maybe their mom just died, you know, or something that wasn't a big catastrophe, but they don't have a parent right now, we're really looking into getting, and there's a lot of grant out there for young homelessness stuff. So, we just haven't, we just fixed our building and now we're applying for grants. So, we're hoping in the near future that we'll have that so we don't have to turn people away who would qualify otherwise.
Because I think we can all say too that we know of kids who maybe were never officially in a foster care system, but they don't have the support at home that I had or that some of you may have had, you know, so I think that's really important to us to expand that funding source so that we can help any young, young person in that situation, and even if they weren't officially in that, we would definitely consider that referral.
And, and you're not looking at just Cumberland County, you're looking at some counties west of, west of Cumberland, is that correct?
Anybody from the state would qualify, we really feel like because of the nature of Newville and the rural community that we really want to target royal, rural kids, kids that are gonna be really comfortable in Newville. And in my experience, there's a lot of rural kids that need help because it's, it's generational poverty. I mean, they may not have had, they may have never seen anyone go to work in their whole lives. You know, they may live in something that doesn't have plumbing, you know, things that are really hard to imagine for us, but it's some of the rural poor, and that's really who we're targeting. So, I think Franklin and Fulton County would be really our next place after Cumberland. Like, we're not, we're not trying to stretch the web super wide, you know, we're trying to kind of keep it to kids that might want to stay here and be comfortable here.
How about Perry?
Like, they're urban, and our kids aren't gonna want to be urban.
We wouldn't know how to help them.
Yeah.
How many young men can you take at once?
Our capacity is 33, we're limiting, we're limiting it to 10, like, so we're taking 10. We don't want, we're not interested in like being full and, you know, we really want to give a good service. We're doing it because we couldn't find a service that was helpful, you know, so we're limiting it to 10, and we're starting with five. So, our first apartment is open, and right now, we would only take five for the next several months because we want to let Jess and Joe get comfortable and just kind of see how it goes.
How many do you have now?
We don't have any right now, we had one boy living here who's actually moved out and doing good, but we did not, once the COVID thing started with liability insurance, you really have to be careful. So, we're being very conservative, and we're just kind of holding our breath.
How many staff people do you have?
Us and Jeff. Yeah, there's, yeah, exactly, there's other people. And we're gonna have like residential leaders where there's gonna be people that come in when the boys get here, and we've already interviewed a number of very good candidates. We, COVID just really slowed us down, we thought we'd be open in March, we had our grand opening March 21st planned with the Chamber of Commerce, and as you can imagine, that didn't really happen. So, we're trying to be patient and brave and just hang in there until it's safer. So, we, we have had a number of people call us about referrals, but we have not accepted one yet. There's a very strict criteria, like, we just don't, we want to make sure it's the, the kids coming in are appropriate for our program.
Who does the background check on the kids?
The county would do that, but they would provide it to us. The kids will be psyche vowed and background checked, as will the employees will be background checked. If it's under 18, though, there's not much, you know, you're not gonna find much, even if somebody did something, you realize.
There's a lot of potential.
Mm-hmm, we're really hopeful.
Yeah. Maybe Jess can share a little bit about her and Joe, Joe's role and what that might look like day-to-day?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like a lot was already said, but basically, like, we're just trying to do life with them and give them a safe place to be people, and so, which is something that when we first heard about this entire thing before we even, the thought came that we might live here at all, we were super excited because that's something that we want to do, is just do life with people and like walk alongside people and share life and share meals and conversations and hobbies, and so, yeah, we would be cooking with them, we would be, I love cleaning, so we'd be like those types of day-to-day things, but also just like the way the building is designed, they, we have a main common area, so that's where we're going to be encouraging them, there's really no reason why, other than sleeping, why they won't be in that common area. So, the goal is that we're kind of just gonna be there, doing life together and studying together if there, there are certain courses that they have to take, and, hey, like, want to come over and play a board game with me, or like just do those types of things where we're just spending time with them, and, yeah, is there, am I missing other important things? Okay.
And we, we weren't looking to have house parents, we were gonna have 24-hour supervisors, but when we met Jess and Joe, we just, it was just perfect, like, we just thought bingo, you know, because we really wanted like, somebody that wasn't gonna micromanage or parent them. I mean, you guys, a lot of you are parents, like, 18, 19-year-olds, they don't love to be parented. So, we wanted somebody that would be healthy, but we don't.
Don't know how to be parents.
Right, right, so we're trying, we thought they might just be a great match, and we're really looking forward to what they can do. But it was a surprise to us that that's how it worked out.
We were surprised, honestly.
As you're building a lot.
Serious ways.
Building allows for ping-pong table, billiard table.
We got a foosball.
Uh-huh. Yeah, we set the building so that everything is shared spaces and they're kind of designated, even though it's broken into different apartment buildings, like, there's only one TV room, and that's.
And one TV, that's it.
One TV, and that's it.
Not even in this apartment, we don't even have one.
So, those kinds of things, and then there is like kind of a library area where it's like for. So those kinds of things. And then there is like kind of a library area where it's like for studying or just if you need a quiet time and a bunch of books, things like that. So, and then, yeah, like a game room with foosball tables, ping pong tables. Um, we have a tiny little exercise room set up in the basement, so just different things like that so that it's very much like a community. So they're not kind of holed off in their room with their video game system or something like that. That's the last thing we want.
Sounds good.
We're, we're a pair of ladies, like you see Becky and I, like, we don't weigh, we don't weigh much, you know? And so we've been dealing with these boys for a long time and we just want to assure you, like, they're not scary. Like, people worry about who they're going to be, but we've worked with them for, for years and years and years. And we wanted to build them a home so they would have somewhere safe to live because we feel they're in danger. They're not a danger. They're in danger. And I think that as you start to meet them, you'll really see that because they'll just cling to you. Like, you don't feel like, you'll just, you'll feel it as soon as you meet them. It's just very obvious that they're not what you fear they are. They're just vulnerable kids.
Great cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pray for us.
Any, any other questions?
How can we best help you?
Thank you. The best way you could help us is you can love the boys, you can, especially the men, you can be there for them, like, you can just help them feel like they have value. Because when you have, when you're then abandoned by your parents, that's why they love the adult attention. They want it, they want you to tell them they're worth it, you know? So when you have any opportunity to interact with them, if you could just remember to let them know they're worth it, that would probably be the number one thing that you could do when they come. Um, Fred and I have talked a little bit and he's included, he's willing to include us in the newsletter, which is super helpful. Can I ask you a quick question? With, with the snow removal, Fred, like, if we would do that, because we don't have boys here right now, so we thought about, we're, we're some able-bodied ladies, you know? What would be, like, what, when it would snow, what are the rules? Like, what time of day would we have to have that done by?
We have twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours from the time the storm ends to shovel a path on the sidewalk, clean a path, put down a little bit of salt and things like that. We could help you out with the salt, a- as I said, right in your, your block there, we know of four families. Elderly people, some that are suffering from illness that could use just their sidewalks cleaned. And it's not more than twenty feet of sidewalk.
Right.
But to them, it's impossible. Uh, a husband and wife that I know down there cannot go out. The wife is, is very ill and she took care of the sidewalks. The husband has a heart issue. The mayor knows him very well. Uh, council has tried to help them with uh temporary parking and so forth. So right in your block, there are four uh individuals that um, you know, could be helped immediately.
So it's been brought to, Shani called me the other day too, and she had a fifth individual, you know, and then um, so I said, no, thank you because we don't have boys here. But we've been kind of talking about it and we thought like we're able-bodied here and we really are kind of just waiting around. So I'll give you a call tomorrow and we'll get those addresses going and we'll just do it this year with the adults. And then we'll get to know some of those people. And if you give us twenty-four hours, that's great. We were worried it'd be like by eight AM or something, you know? So we'll get the shovels, you get the salt, and we'll at least do that. We figured we'd limit it to six this year because with your four and Shaney's five. So we'll take one more and see how that goes. And if it's not too burdensome, then we'll take more. Yeah, so we'll do that a while, yeah. And we all could use a little workout after the COVID pounds, you know?
I have several sidewalks for them. And I'd like to pay them for it, but I don't know how to do that.
Come out and talk to us. Just come out and talk to us. We'll happily do the work.
Anything else that we can do for you?
Anything?
I think um, maybe just, obviously you guys are all just trusted members of this community and just being able to answer some of the questions that people may have now that you hopefully are a little bit more familiar with our program. Um, just being able to spread that information, make sure people have good information about what we're doing and who's coming. And um, be able to help, just kind of share that, that information would be really helpful, I think.
Well, I know, I thank you for giving this information tonight because, you know, when it first started out, you know, it was going to be all these bad people moving in there and, you know, it, it, it wasn't, what we were hearing weren't, wasn't good. But what we've heard tonight is very exciting.
Thank you. I owe you guys apology. When I posted that on Facebook, I had no idea what would happen. Nobody cares about me on Facebook ever. So I had no idea.
It was not the intention to.
Yeah, so when that, yeah, I, so I thought I was like, hey, last day at work, woo-hoo, Friday, you know? I felt like a couple of my friends would be like, hey, way to go, girl. And then when that happened and the news showed up, that was completely by surprise. So we saw, I'm sorry that we didn't keep you in the loop better. We didn't realize.
That's okay.
Well, thank you for inviting.
And I can teach them how to cook.
I'm excited to learn these skills.
They're going to be fun. And if you're an empty nester, they're going to be all over you, like, you'll love it.
Well, I have grandchildren, so I don't, well, I wouldn't say I'm an empty nester, but I do like to cook.
You got round two over there.
Randy, you probably have a couple gardeners too available for next year.
Yes, uh, you know, we, I, I'm part of a group that does uh a community garden that supports the school districts hall packs program. And we would welcome the help.
That would be great.
And um, you know, just from listening to this, I, I'm, I, I am sure that you're going to be successful just through your enthusiasm. You know, be- beyond your knowledge of how these things should work and, and what your goals are, your, your enthusiasm about, about it says uh as much as the fact that we now know you girls really know what you're doing. And uh, a- as Joey said early on, uh, being the mayor, I have people approach me about things all the time. And um at the beginning, there were, for lack of a better word, naysayers. And, and I would just tell them um, be patient. And I, I don't think that it's going to be what you may think it's going to be. You know, after listening to you girls uh tonight, I can tell those same people it's not going to be anything like you may have originally thought it was going to be. You know, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, could you have them back in a few months so that we could get an update and feel better?
Yeah, sure.
They cheer us up.
Cookies if you invite us in person.
We would love nothing more than to meet in person. I know uh, we suggested something for the newsletter, but uh, I, Mayor's right, your presentation here tonight was, was great. And I think we could do more good with a video, if you would like to prepare a video. And we could have um Tess Sinkovitz, Blosser, Tess takes care of our website. And she could put that on the website for you. And I think that would be much more informative than um, we could still do something for the newsletter, but I think a video presentation like this would be very helpful.
Okay, we'll do that.
This is also on YouTube, so um, we can direct them, we can direct them tonight uh to go off of Facebook to go check out, you know, this, this piece. And, you know, hopefully that would answer a lot of the questions as well, so, very good. Give some thought to that.
How about some writing in the Sentinel and Valley Times on it?
They did a great story on us in the Valley Times that was, it was so accurate and so good, we just loved it. Like, so we were in there, but once the Sentinel hasn't, we've never called anyone, it's just who calls us. So the Sentinel doesn't really carry us. But the Valley Times article was great.
Joe Crass at the Sentinel, C R E S S, Joe Crass. Joe will do a story for you. He's always looking for things.
Okay, we will, we will send him an email. Joe Crass.
Got it.
Thanks.
In the midst of all the bad news, it's always great to hear something like this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. We just want to love them up and hope they do, we give them a chance.
Learn to paint or clean, let me know.
I will.
All right.
They're going to have energy here.
Very good. Uh, we're excited to see what you guys do and I'm sure it's going to be great things. Um, like, like they said, we'll, we'll catch up again in six months and hopefully it'll be in person, so. Fingers crossed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
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 All right, moving on to legal matters, uh, discuss proposed ordinance twenty twenty oh nine uh setting tax rates for twenty twenty-one in confirmation with the twenty twenty-one uh general fund budget. Anything uh we need to add to that, Marcus?
Yep, should be ready for adoption at our meeting um on Tuesday the fifteenth.
Any questions for Marcus on that? Okay, uh, yeah, somebody say something? Sorry, uh, discuss proposed amendments to the Newville Borough Police Policy and Procedure Manual in accordance with the Presidential Executive Orders thirteen nine twenty-nine.
So these are mandate, well, some of these are mandated changes and others of them are suggested changes.
Yeah, yes.
No, the, the, unfortunately, these are not suggestions. We, to, to maintain our eligibility for federal funds, we have, we have to do it. We actually have to send uh, after the revisions are made, we have, we have to send a copy of our, our field regulation manual uh to the Department of Justice.
It says in the chief's note, it's on, unless the mandates are applied, no federal grant money will be available. It says in the chief's note here, unless the mandates are applied, no federal grant money will be available.
That's correct.
But it doesn't say that suggestions have to be.
No, it, it, what we have to do, it is what uh was contained in the correspondence that the chief received from the Department of Justice. And, and I, as I reinforce what I said about this last week, we had to make very few, I think maybe two or three adjustments because most of what they wanted, we already had.
So we don't see that, it's not a problem to be able to, to do this.
No.
And we can take action on this on the fifteenth, right?
Yes.
Any other questions on that issue? Marcus?
Yes.
Do you think we should do a resolution to adopt these and to adopt the revised manual?
Yeah, I think it wouldn't hurt to have that. So I, I could do that.
All right, any other questions? All right, uh, Mr. Bina, I think you had information on the uh, the ballot question.
Fred, how widely did we disseminate that? Did we, did you email it out to the troops?
Everyone has a copy of your letter and the three questions.
It turns out that uh last year uh the legislature passed revisions to liquor code which gave more options, um, including the ones that uh that I've drawn up for you. The idea is to give um, originally it was an up or down vote, are you wet or dry? With certain exceptions for things like uh veterans organizations and golf clubs, that sort of thing. But now they've uh, and I have, I, I can send out copies of the legislation. Um, but the language on the three questions come right from um the new language they put into the uh legislation. And basically what we're trying to do is um make it more possible for um restaurants to have at least malt beverages. I'm not going, I didn't want to go full bore into um to uh, to, to hard alcohol. So the question one is, do you favor the granting of malt and brewed beverage dispenser licenses for consumption on the premises where sold the borough of Newville, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania? Question number two is, do you favor the granting of brewery licenses for the sale of malt or brewed beverages by the case or keg or by the glass for consumption on the premises, plus the sale of wine and spirits by the glass for consumption on the premises in the borough of Newville, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania? Three is, do you favor the granting of additional licenses, board approved, limited winery locations for the sale of wine by the bottle to go and glass for consumption on the premises, plus the sale of spirits and malt or brewed beverages for consumption on the premises in the borough of Newville, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania? So those are the three questions. Um, because they're using the language right out of the code um as passed last year, it may not sound the way you might want it to sound, but um when they come up with these ballot questions, they, they sort of expect us to use that word, word for word. So winery, brewery, restaurant, those are the three, I think, that we talked about. We don't have to do them all, but uh you can only put liquor ballot questions on the ballot every four years. I believe because of the way they've divided these up, I believe that we could do all three. At least we should try for that with the uh, the election board, board of elections.
Marcus, under the definition section of this, uh, the word spirits, you know, beer, wine and spirits, what are they referring to with the word spirits?
I suspect spirits are um harder alcohol, but I'll, I'll take a look at that definition.
Okay.
Again, I, I think you have to sort of envision what we already see in Carlisle. Right behind FaZe is a uh, is, is a malt beverage, I think it's, I think it's beer. I could be wrong, but I think that's what it is.
Yeah, they brew their own.
Yeah, they brew their own, um, and they sell right there on site. They also sell, sell some food with it, I believe. My, my kids love to, um, I shouldn't say this, but my son and daughter are of the generation that they love to explore wineries and breweries and so on. And for them, that's, that's a, that's a fun thing to do. I've gone with them. And I can see why it's a fun thing to do, so um, you know, that doesn't mean that we're going out every night, but it does mean that uh you give options to people, so. But the question is, uh, it's not that I've uh given up my Baptist upbringing to uh, but, but it's all along the lines of trying to uh create options for the expansion of business opportunities here in the borough. Consistent with what we've been talking about for the last several years.
Marcus, is the first definition here, restaurant use of malt and brewed beverages, that does not include wine, I guess?
No, it does not include wine. And that's only because I couldn't find a question that um, and I'll look, I'll look harder. In fact, I'll send this, I'll send act uh forty-eight of two thousand nineteen out to all of you by email. I'll have that done tomorrow. Uh, and you can look at it uh yourselves, but um, again, the questions are, they're written by somebody.
Who's never been to a restaurant.
Well, that's the point. So, you know, it's, it's uh, you know, I was just, I didn't want to go, I didn't want to create situations where, where uh licensing uh something broader than we want for this.
So, so let's go through the three questions and just so we're all clear, like, what they would apply to. So I'm looking at number one, do you favor the granting of malt and brewed beverage retail dispenser license for the consumption on the premises, premises uh where sold Newville Borough, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania? That's a restaurant, a restaurant to sell beer.
The first.
And that could, the first one. And so that could be. And that could, the first one. And so that could be beer from a tap, it could be beer from a, from a cooler. It could be a bottle of beer, but it's for on the premises and that would be a restaurant.
That's a pretty limited use, I think. I mean, people like beer, but people go to restaurants if it's a decent restaurant, they won't drink wine. Is there a way that we can, I guess I'm not clear about what the language issue here is, but is there a way we can encompass that in this somehow or?
Well, I think that's why the second and the third ones kind of, well, well, they do, but it sounds like they, they require you to, um,
basically have a brewery license with, with a retail outlet to sell, to sell wine by the glass or you have to set up a winery. I mean, if we think we can get all three through, great, my sense is going to be, the more you put in front of people, the more they're going to, you know, wonder about it. Um, it sounds like we're, you know, if you're little three, it, I could be wrong here, but it's, it may sound like, you know, we're just trying to open it wide open and you might get some resistance from that.
Well, that's why the, the people who are, the people who are, uh, passing the petitions or doing the signatures need to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Right.
And, uh, we have to do some, some explaining in a run-up, usually through newspaper articles uh, on the website and so on, as to what the purpose is of these questions.
Yeah, I think we will have to explain this to folks. Um, well, I guess Scott was in the middle of something there, but why don't you go ahead, Scott?
Um, well, question number two, do you favor the granting of brewery license for the sale of malt or beverage, brewed beverages by the keg, by the case or the keg and by the glass for consumption on the premises? Plus the sale of wine and spirits by the glass for consumption on, uh, premises? That one almost sounds like a wine, wine tasting room, a, a tap room. Much like the Molly Pitcher, uh, you can go in there and buy a case of beer if you want. That's how I read it was, is that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that was, that was part of my question there is, you know, if, if you're a restaurant owner, uh, and you want to sell wine, then you're going to have to get, uh, a brewery license, right? Uh, and you may have to get, do you have to get a restaurant license to sell malt and brewed beverages or could you just get the second one?
Well, remember, people could have, um, wine in restaurants if they bring their own bottle, but to sell it, you either have to go broader and have a, um, in a sense of state store, selling all kinds of beverages, or you've got to have either a winery or brewery attached.
And that, that, the second one I read is as a microbrewery, not, not necessarily a, a tap room.
Yeah, I mean, it just kind of forces somebody who just wants to have a restaurant, um, and be able to sell, uh, wine and beer to, um, to actually establish a brewery, um, of some sort and sell wine and beer. Or maybe you just, if you have the license, you just sell the wine or something, but it's, it's, it seems to be making somebody that wants to open a restaurant jump through some extra hoops. Is that, is that wrong? Marcus?
Well, again, we're trying to, uh, to create a situation where, uh, restaurants have some options. Uh, it looks like the only option that I see that doesn't go broader than we want it to is the malt beverages. So sort of pizza and beer.
And that defeats the purpose of, a, a, a big part of the purpose, I think here. I think there, it's going to be hard to get somebody to open a good restaurant if they can't sell wine.
Well, you, I guess, I guess the real, the real problem is that we're trying to compare ourselves to wet boroughs or, or municipalities that gives, gives the liquor licensed, um, owner that kind of option. What this legislation did was it permitted lesser options. And maybe at this point, you just want to go with, uh, microbreweries and wineries. Open that up for, uh, to see how that goes, whether or not there are any takers for that in the borough first, if you're not comfortable. I don't, I'm not an expert on the liquor law, but, uh, I have the legislation now at hand. And if you can see some other way to fit restaurants without making the entire, um, alcohol liquor option in place for each of those restaurants. I really don't know how to do that.
Well, it looks like, the way I read, read it is that number two is, is basically authorizing microbreweries. Number three is, is, uh, authorizing wineries. Number one is really the only one, and I, and I think Jack's concern is that it, that language is not broad enough to include, uh, the selling of wine.
No, it's not.
That's.
Or harder liquor.
That, um, if, I don't know that most people are going to have a hang up on harder liquor, but I think Jack's, Jack's point of, a lot of people would expect if we're allowing restaurants to serve alcohol, that they would be also allowed to serve wine. I, I think that's a good, is a good point. So I don't know if we can broaden the language out to include wine uh, or, or not, but that's the only, that's the only change that I would see that we would need to make. But I do think we're wisest to do all three if we're doing any.
Are, are we stuck with the wording of these questions? Maybe we have to use them in this form?
I think we are.
Why do they write it this way, Marcus? Why do they give you these weird choices?
And I don't think they're really made or tailored for, for communities this size and what, and what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out why, yeah, what, what are they tailored for? I mean, why would you want to limit a restaurant? You're going to let them sell alcohol, but only beer.
So for example, if Applebee's wanted to go in on West Big Spring Avenue, they would only be able to sell beer in the restaurant.
Correct.
But you could bring your own bottle of wine. BYOB, right?
If they let you.
If they let you.
They probably won't want you to because they're selling.
They want you to buy the beer. Yeah, I, I would, I, I agree with everything Michael said. Um, if there's a way that we can just include wine in number one, I think all three then encompass everything that we're looking for.
If you can make the changes to the wording.
Correct. All right.
If you can, we're still getting a half loaf, better than none.
Or a half bottle, however you want to look at it.
Bottle, okay. That's better.
Uh, Ed, you're, I think you're on mute. Hold on. Now try it. Hey, Ed? Over here on the, click on the chat, type, type your comment there and I'll read it to everybody.
Fred, do you think those questions encompass? What do you think? What do you think of those questions?
Well, it, it's clear from the act that you cannot modify the question. Uh, each one of the questions is preceded by a statement. When the question is in respect to granting a liquor license, and then it goes on, it shall be in the form of the following, and that's in every one of these, uh, it, it precedes every question. So it's very clear that the act, uh, sets forth the types of questions that you can have. And under Act forty-eight, these are the questions that are allowed.
In, in the end, it may not matter that it includes the word spirits because to, to do that, that would involve, uh, an LCB liquor license, which nobody here is going to be able to do. That's pretty expensive too.
Correct.
Could a restaurant apply for a brewery license?
Um, I, I, I think they're often the other way around. Uh, the breweries apply for a restaurant license is usually the way, way they work.
Well, that's, yeah, that's kind of the question is, can, will, if you get a brewery that wants a license, would they also be willing to open a restaurant? I mean, I think restaurants are one of the things that we think would be really important here.
But if you, if you haven't visited one of these breweries, that, uh, what is it, Appalachian, um, on, on the, uh, out on the Pike? You know, there's, they're busy places. They're, uh, and they're really appealing to to the generation that, uh, we just heard about, the eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds who were, uh, trying to find their way in the world. So.
And, and they are almo- almost, at least any of them that I've seen, do have a restaurant portion to them because otherwise they're a bar. And so, so, yeah, they, that's kind of the, the whole concept of microbrewery and, and the wine, not as much the wineries, but the microbreweries in particular, it, it involves a restaurant, uh, as part of the concept.
Maybe then two is better than one for us. I mean, I think it, somebody said, yeah, you know, the number one gives you half a loaf, but it may not be enough for a restaurant to be successful. You know, you don't want to set up a restaurant that just sells wine because it, it affects the menu as well. You know, you have a different menu with beer. It's like Applebee's, right? You have a different mem- uh, uh, menu with, when you have, when you're serving beer than when you're serving wine. Um, and wine has a much larger markup. You know, you can probably, you can, you know, sell a bottle of, of wine in a restaurant for three times the retail price, but not true for beer. So that's where people will, you know, that's where restaurants will make up a lot of their margin because they, you lose, you lose money on food anyway. I don't know. Should we think about number two?
I, I think we think about all three.
Yeah, okay.
I, I would think if, if we include all three and it's approved, then any restaurant would be allowed to choose from the beer and wine to, to do one or the other or both because they were all approved.
Yeah. I think, that sounds right. I think we just have to be able to explain to people when we're walking this petition around, what this all, what this all means and why we're doing these three things. It's just, it's a little more complicated explanation, but maybe we can figure out, you know, a message that captures it fairly succinctly.
Um, Ed's question was, how many permits will be allowed? It's a good question, Ed.
That's based on, um, I think that's accounting wide. Depends how many are out. So, yeah, the, the information I read said the, uh, ability of licenses are going to be impacted by the limit of the, the county.
And I, I think that, uh, for like microbreweries and wineries, um, they can go the route of the Department of Agriculture. So they, they have some more flexibility with, with some things. But if you're talking about a restaurant who wants a liquor license, that, those are certainly capped. And like, like Randy was saying, that, well, they get them for fair market value. So, you know, you own a liquor license, you can sell it for whatever you want to sell it for.
Well, the last one in this county sold for a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that that's going to be an issue here. That was hard liquor though, right?
Yes.
Often their liquor license is worth more than the restaurant.
Does anybody think that, that, uh, number two, which has, um, allows the sale of spirits, hard liquor, uh, is going to create some resistance? I mean, I don't, I don't know how people in town feel about it, but I, that's often where people balk.
Well, the, the other option is we, you know, we could, uh, reference them to hook and flask in Carlisle. Uh, you know, they're a distillery right on site and, um, you know, they, obviously they sell, but they've, they're not a, they're not a problem in town.
I didn't go as far as doing a distill- distillery. There is language for that in the act. I didn't think you, um, we want to encourage. Out in the, out in the hills, there's probably enough moonshine, uh, anyways. So the point is, we didn't want to necessarily bring it downtown.
Well, I was under the impression when we first talked about this, that it wasn't going to be any hard liquor, that it was just basically beer and wine.
Well, that's the emphasis, the, because you have to have a brewery or a winery associated with questions two or three.
Right.
But, uh, you know, the liquor control board, they, they like to have all their products available for sale, I guess, when you open a brewery or a winery.
Right. And those are only available for consumption on premises. So that,
Correct.
eliminate it a little bit.
Any other questions?
How does BYOB fits in this?
That's still permitted.
Under one, under two, under three, under all?
It's permitted now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, but I bet under any of these, that they're, they're not going to want you to do that. They're going to watch this, they're, they're going to want to sell you their stuff. I mean, it, UIOB only works when you don't have a liquor license. Um, and then it, it's an accommodation for people that you want to come to your restaurant or wherever, you know, wherever you are. But if they're, if they have liquor licenses or wine licenses, they're not going to let you bring a bottle in.
That's true. But I can go tomorrow night to Brother's Pizza and take a bottle of wine with me and have a glass?
If they permit it.
Yes.
So, um, I suggest that, uh, I'll send out the actual Act, uh, forty-eight for you all to look at and, uh, if, and I suggest that we think about it and study it before our meeting on the fifteenth. And then if you want to move forward with it, at least we have the questions.
And we were talking briefly about this before the meeting. Um, so it, it sounds like council should have to, should approve the ballot questions and they would go to petition. Which I believe, I forget what the number was, a hundred and fifty-four, I think, signatures are required to get it on the ballot. That balloting time, I believe, is January into February, to get it on the May ballot.
And how many signatures do we have to get?
I, I think it was a hundred and fifty-four.
It was like a hundred and sixty-five or something, but it's, it's in that, that ball.
I did the math here, a hundred and fifty-four point two five.
Who's going to be the two five?
What are you thinking, Fred? I can see you thinking.
I, I think we're at a disadvantage because we're making assumptions about these questions that basically come down to the LCB's enforcement. When we pass these, if these questions pass, it's going to come down to the LCB as to, you know, what they're going to allow for. And where I'm sitting, we're at a disadvantage because we're assuming that it means this. We're assuming that it'll provide for that. And that may, or may not be the case. And we have tried and we cannot get answers out of the LCB. You have tried on several occasions. I think that's where it, we're at a disadvantage here. I think if we had some input, uh, from LCB, it would certainly shed a lot of light on these questions.
That's true.
So I think, since we don't have that, I think your approach of doing multiple questions is probably the best approach.
Well, let's do, let's do this. I want you to read them, consider them. I'll send over Act forty-eight for you to look at and, uh, I'll see if I can't, uh, tap into, to, um, someone with expertise in, uh, in this area.
If we're going to do all three questions, then we have to make sure that the people carrying these petitions are consistent with how they're answering people's questions. So one person isn't saying some, one thing. If we get questioned about the spirit. If we get questioned about the spirit part of it and, and someone else is saying something different. You have to make sure the message is consistent.
So I was saying before, it's, it's a complicated message with all this stuff in there. Fred, I didn't understand what you meant about being at a disadvantage because we don't have guidance from the LCB. Could you explain that?
What is a, what is liquor? Define liquor. Does anyone know? I don't. So how can we have someone circulate a petition when we don't even know what the terminology is in the question?
So if we
I think we're in a disadvantage because we, it would seem that if you want to do these things within a municipality, the state agency that you go to for assistance is the LCB. And we seem to run up a dead alley at the LCB. My question is, you know, are these questions, the, the questions that we need to have for what council wants in the borough? What I hear you saying is you want to be able to go into a restaurant, order a meal, choose between wine, beer or alcohol, a mixed drink, something like that. That's what I'm hearing. So my question is, which one of these allows for it? And I don't think, from what I'm reading here, I don't see any one that does allow for everything. It's like a part of it or and, and what I'm afraid of, when people go in, they're going to look at the first question and say yes, and maybe not answer the next two and just go on. So I think just from where I'm sitting, I, I have questions. What, what do these things mean? Maybe the liquor code defines them. Maybe there's a code. You know, we have a zoning ordinance and the preamble to our zoning ordinance are definitions. Somewhere these things must be defined.
So, so are you saying that the LCB could give us guidance on this? Is that what you think in, in terms of?
I would, I would hope so. I mean, you know, because what you're going to do is allow, you're going to allow for the, the sale and consumption. And then whoever, you know, wants to open up a store and begin to dispense is going to go to the LCB. And they're going to say, well, here's the question that was passed in Newville. The LCB may turn around and say, well, you, you can't do that. This means something entirely different from what we all may be thinking that it will allow for.
Well, can't we just have a conversation with them about this?
I think what Fred is, I think what Fred is indicating is that Marcus on several occasions has attempted to have a conversation with them and they haven't responded. We got the questions, but they're not, they've not to date responded to any of his inquiries to actually speak to someone.
So
Correct Marcus?
Yes. So I'm thinking of ways I can backdoor it by getting some expertise from those that commonly apply for these licenses. So so let me, let me do some, some investigation in that way, let you guys read through them and look at the various other options that the act gives us. But these were the three that I thought most closely fit what we were trying to accomplish in opening up the borough for more business opportunities.
And I believe Green, I believe Green Township just this past year passed. They changed their status. You know, maybe their solicitor would be helpful in that process. I'm pretty sure it was Green Township Franklin County.
I'll, I'll check that out.
Another option is the, the LCE, the Liquor Control Enforcement People, which is a Bureau of the State Police, who are the ones who actually enforce these regulations. They, they may be able to give you as much insight as, as the LCB could.
Mayor, do you have any contacts with the state police liquor enforcement guys?
That would be Major Scott Miller. Yes.
If you could send me his information and phone number, I'll give him a call.
Okay.
Marcus, another person to reach out to is Shelley Houck at the Pennsylvania Boroughs Association.
Okay.
Shelley has been there for over thirty-five years. She's a legislative research analyst. She works with a lot of this legislation and deals only with boroughs in Pennsylvania. That's all she does. I've referred a lot of solicitors to her over the years and everyone has come back and said they, she's the answer, go to person. She always has been.
The Art of Donuts, if they, they took a position on this legislation last year to get it passed.
I find it odd that we can't get a meeting for the county agency.
You're talking about Liquor Control Board?
Yeah.
That's not a county agency. They're, they're a state agency and they're all virtual, they're all at home.
They're all at home now.
Yeah, we're all working from home. Is there?
Not me.
That's true. But even if you are working from home, you're reachable. Is there some reason we can't lean on them a little harder? Is there, could we get Barbara Glimm to help us? I mean, it's crazy that we can't get a response from a state agency.
Yeah, I could call Barb. Let me pursue some of these opportunities and we'll see.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate what you're doing. I understand, you know, bureaucracy, bureaucrats can be difficult. But maybe we need to keep escalating this. It's, 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 it doesn't make sense for us to put something out there.
Well, I don't, I don't want to put anything out there until you guys are a hundred percent comfortable with the language and the, in the impact of the ballot question too.
Yeah.
To go to the trouble of promoting it and then find out that they won't grant any licenses because it does something different from what we want it to do.
And if somebody has that information, which they should be, they should be able to get it from.
All right. So between now and the fifteenth, you'll email out the, the, the act and we can read through it, study up on it.
Yeah, if that's, if that, if, if you, if you want to get to, to sleep, read the act, that'll put you right out. Okay?
Sounds good.
And you'll make those other contacts.
I will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks Marcus.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else Marcus?
I was just, I'm not, I'm not Marcus, but I was just on the P, LCB's site looking at some information. And they have a seminar there for retail licensees as in PDF format. They define a retail license as a restaurant being able to sell wine, beer and liquor. So I know the language doesn't, and, and the question doesn't include wine, but according to their definition of a retail license, that does include wine. So I'm not sure if that helps at all.
You know, the question is, in order to get people to go for the retail license that does all three, do we have to basically say we're going wet across the board?
Gotcha.
So the reason why we're going with more limited questions i- is because we didn't think that we didn't think we wanted to put the big question to the borough at this point. We wanted to go for breweries, for wineries and some, some opportunities for restaurants to have at least malt beverages. But to, in order to do all three, I think you're going to have to go with a different question, which is broader and includes all sorts of licenses. But I could be wrong, so I'm going to investigate and find out if there's another way to go. All right. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and this is just for your information, that there was a meeting this, this morning, the building committee did meet. And it's approved, the committee approved the floor plans that, that I think Fred for the borough and the chief for the police department have had input on and and it looks like we're going to move ahead with trying to, to get this project going. The next major steps obviously are going to be cost and and we'll find more about that in, in the future. Is that fair to say Fred?
Yes, everyone, everyone received a floor plan and site plan. Some elevation drawings today. Everything that was reviewed at the meeting was emailed out to you this afternoon.
So that's kind of, it's kind of exciting, but we still have to see how much it's going to cost and whether or not it's viable. So.
So we have to pay Mr. Govan seventy-five hundred dollars, is that right for the?
Seventy-one hundred. Yeah, we have to pay Galbraith pre-design.
Right, yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Administration Committee. You're muted Michael.
I don't have anything at the moment.
Okay. Any questions for Michael?
Do we have to, do we have to talk about the contract?
Scott, I have one thing. We have been awarded a grant from the Cumberland County Redevelopment Authority in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars for Parsonage Street. I talked to the Redevelopment Authority on Wednesday before we left for Thanksgiving. And we will receive a contract early next year for this. Questioning the council, we need to have an engineer draw up plans and specification manual. We budgeted twelve thousand for engineering next year. Do you want me to contact Tim Corman to have him prepare specifications for this project? I would estimate his work will cost about four thousand for the design and spec manual. The next step would be to have, to hire him to prepare specifications and site plan, a design plan for the road profile.
Well, if it's going to need done, we might as well.
Well, the one thing about Parsonage Street is you're going to have to, it, it's a little bit different from North Corporation Street because you have some grades on North Corporation Street. But I would like to have have him, have a survey crew come out and spend a day and shoot grades on, on Parsonage Street. Because the last thing we want is to pave it and have water standing on it. We don't have those problems right now. And I would recommend that you pay a little bit extra to develop a road profile and make sure that, you know, when it is paved, we don't end up with water laying in sections along the curb line.
That's, that's in addition to the four thousand or?
I think you could include it in that, that price, Jack. His price for North Corporation was about three thousand. And I think that you're probably talking about a survey crew in the field for one day to do that. It just helps the paving contractor. If the paving contractor has a plan to follow, then you eliminate water standing along the curb and you eliminate citizen complaints. And the last thing you want to do is spend a hundred thousand dollars to improve a street and have everyone complaining that I didn't have water standing in front of my house and now I do.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is that four thousand dollars, does that roll into the grant then or?
Well, we could do it through the grant, but if we do it through the grant, we have to do it through an RFP process.
Okay.
And we have to go out for bids to hire the engineer and the cost could be a lot higher.
Right.
That's why I budgeted in general fund twelve thousand so that you would have as council the money to go out and do these projects. And the other thing is, you know, you're going to need every bit of that hundred and two thousand dollars to pave it and to fix curbs and putting crosswalks and, you know, money, you'll need every dime to make the improvement.
All right. Do you need a motion now or tonight?
No, we could do, we could, we could do it at the fifteenth.
All right. I'd say let's do that. I mean, we've always been happy with Tim's work and, you know, he's going to give us a good product. So. Anything else for administration? Marcus, you were saying something about contracts?
That's what I wanted to mention. I was going to mention what Fred just talked about.
Gotcha. Okay.
The only other thing, yeah, the only other thing I should mention is tomorrow I'll be working on the police service agreements and getting those mailed out to Sailors Market, Big Spring School District and also Green Ridge Village. They will go out tomorrow.
Very good. Economic Development Committee, Jack?
Ed, not much. I got, I talked to Bob Kance today. He agreed to be on the advisory committee. And I got a call from Scott Anderson at the high school, the Tempest Club Faculty Advisor, and he said he has a young woman who is interested in this and he gave me her name, but I can't remember it. But he said that she would be calling to, to chat about it. So that would give us probably five of the nine members that we think that we set out to get.
All right. Very good. Any questions for Jack? All right. Parks and Rec, I'm not sure if Ed's back. I think he blogged off and tried to come back on, but I'm not, I don't see him. We'll skip over that. Go ahead.
Could I offer Scott something on Parks and Rec?
Yep.
You know, there was a, a discussion at the last meeting about modifying the press box and I went down and looked at it and frankly, by the time you modify it, it'd be cheaper to knock it down and put up a decent new steel building.
Yeah.
One floor instead of two floors. I, I just, I think that would be the way to go.
Yeah, I know Ed, Ed was looking at, at options there with that. He and I talked briefly afterwards too, about the same thing. It's, that building's probably not worth trying to sell.
But before we do this and before we go opening ourselves up to some of these tournaments that were offered over at Heisman's, I think we should have, we should sit down with Kevin Yost and discuss some things. Number one, parking and scheduling of games so that we don't conflict with the Zion Lutheran Church. The last thing we need is to lose our favoritism with Zion because then we've lost a major parking area and, you know, we, we need to coordinate that. Tournaments starting in the morning while church services are being played, I think is in poor taste. I don't think we should allow that. I just think we need to sit down and set down some game rules, playing rules as to how this is going to work. Because it's, it, we're going to add a lot of traffic to the park and I know Ed's in favor of seeing that. I think we all are. But there could be some adverse problems with these tournaments. We also want to make clear that no alcohol can be consumed on our park. There's a difference between our community park and Heisman's Ball Field.
Yeah. All right. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I feel like that's probably a, a good plan. Anybody else? Means that's something that you and, you and Ed and Kevin can sit down and do?
Well, that or we could, you know, arrange a Zoom meeting. It might be a good idea just to have a Zoom meeting of our recreation committee. We haven't met in a while. It gives the committee something to get together and talk about. And, you know, the more people we have looking at this, the better. And they could make some recommendations to council. That would be my suggestion.
That, that would be great. Yeah.
Fred, I heard that Heisman's was sold. What's the impact of that?
Well, that's what's happening here. Some of the teams that were going to, that had played over at Heisman's, I think are looking, especially like the softball leagues, are looking to find a new place to play. And so they've approached Kevin Yost about coming to Newville. And that's fine. You know, we'd love to see the activity. And that's fine, you know, we'd love to see the activity at the park. We've been gearing up for it with new bleachers and fencing and backstop, and we've made all those improvements. I'm just saying that the groups that have been playing at our park for the past few years have basically been church leagues. And we've not had any problems, but if you get into these tournaments and people coming from all over the state, it just, things change. And I think we all just need to sit down, have a dialogue and an understanding of what we're trying to do and accomplish. We don't want to have problems with the neighbors. We don't want to have problems with Zion. And when we tried this this past year, immediately, the first problem was Zion parishioners showed up on Sunday and found no place to park in their own church lot because the baseball teams were there and had taken up their park.
Thank you, Fred.
Well, I had a complaint from a council person, so. No, seriously, you know, over the years Zion has done, and they're opening the doors for the coat drive. Zion has really been a big supporter of the borough. When it snows, they open up their parking lot. And really, we just, we just have to be mindful of all that.
I agree.
The the type of tournaments that they had over at Heisman's were like weekend long deals where people actually camped out over there, which which is virtually impossible at at, you know, at our facility. It it, and I know, you know, it's sort of a double edged sword. Because those tournaments, those teams have to pay, you know, a couple, a couple hundred dollar registration fee. Which would enable Kevin's group to make additional improvements to the field. But on the flip side of that, the number of people that you normally see at those tournaments is just way too, way more than we could handle.
Alright, so I think a meeting with the the rec committee with Kevin is probably the way to go and we'll work on setting that up. I'll talk to Ed about that. Anything else for Parks and Rec?
What is the capacity of the two place, two places?
Of what two places?
Well, the two parks we're talking about for for this purpose.
Well, we don't own the one park, so. I mean, our town park, oh.
Versus
The Heisman area is probably three times the size.
That's what I thought, drive by it and see it's huge. That's, that would be a major concern, I would think.
Are teams looking to move because of the cost increase? Is that it, Fred?
I don't know. I I don't know what the reason is. I don't know if the new owners have new regulations or what, but suddenly there's great interest in our park. Number one, because it's so well maintained and but, you know, I understand Kevin's looking to raise money and but we don't want to do this, you know, making enemies with our neighbors who have been good to us. And we want to be mindful of the people down in that area. We don't want, you know, drinking on the park grounds and we don't want our police down there all the time carrying. So I I think we need to sit down and just lay some ground rules and have an understanding of what what it is is going to happen here.
I think the the company of the purchase that, I think their focus is more on youth, youth baseball and youth softball. So I think a lot of the adult leagues are probably going to be going by the wayside. And if they're bringing in baseball as well, they're, yeah, they'll be, they'll be packed with just baseball and youth softball. I was involved when the car shows opened up in in Carlisle. And when you bring large amounts of people in with motor homes and travel trailers, they tend to park on the street, believing they can use the streets for whatever purpose, including getting rid of their well, getting rid of anything that they need to get rid of. So we had to pass legislation in the Borough of Newville, or at least we had to advocate for that to get the mobile homes and the the trailers and the travel trailers off the off the streets. So you don't want to have something that big that creates that problem on side streets. Alright, anything else with that?
That's a lot.
Alright, public safety. Bob?
I keep reiterating the problem we have with the sidewalks and I'm hoping maybe that those will be resolved over the next two or three years or so, but and the lighting apparently, which is an issue, I think that's going to be taken care of. Again, it's going to take time. The the streets, the markings for sidewalks, for walking areas, that's another important thing. I can't think of anything right now. If I'm missing something in terms of public safety, please let me know. Those were critical things that I keep thinking about. Of course, now with the snow coming and we do have ordinance on that and the need to get them cleaned up in time and what I heard from these young ladies today kind of make me happy, like we're going to have mentors and possibly some other help for the senior citizens to get their sidewalks cleaned up, those who can't take care of it. So am I missing anything else? I'm kind of new to this game, so let me know.
Sounds good. No questions for Bob?
No, but I had a conversation with a resident on East Main Street last night. And they're concerned about the manholes and they're, they were talking about when the, you know, tractor trailers come through town and they hit those manholes. It lifts them up and then they slam down. And, you know, they're just a little concerned about our streets, you know, what kind of damage it could be doing to them plus they just think it's not good for the manhole covers either. And evidently, they must have contacted PennDOT. And PennDOT said that yes, it is a state road, however, the manholes are property of the borough.
There isn't a manhole, there isn't a manhole in town that doesn't rattle, Joe.
Okay.
Because they're they're cast iron and they're on a cast iron frame.
Right.
And when the trucks hit them, every single one on Main Street rattles. One in front of your house rattles.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Yeah, there's not one that, you know, doesn't. The the state is going to pave the roads. And when they pave them, the Water and Sewer Authority is going after, reset those manholes. Either raise them up or lower them. And so the authority doesn't want to spend the money now to fix them, have the state come through next year and change the grades on all of them. Have to do them all over, so.
Okay.
Do they rattle every, I got the calls too. I've had two or three calls and it's, you know, the one in front of my house rattles.
Well, yeah, I I it doesn't, doesn't bother me, but, you know, when I was talking to this person, you know, I said, well, I can mention it, but I said, I don't really know what we can do about it, so.
Yeah, I think once the street is paved and everything is, you know, resurfaced, then it will improve, but you're still, even with the street being paved, manholes are metal to metal and they rattle.
Okay.
There were there was a company came out with a rubber insert a couple of years ago. And we tried that and that didn't work. They fell apart after a few months.
Thanks for the info.
They contacted me also, Joey, so it's probably the same person. This was good information that Fred provided.
Right.
I wasn't aware of all these complexities of it. Am I missing something in terms of safety? And is safety connected with the other concept called security? I'm I'm kind of thinking about the boundaries of 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 safety. Any questions, any comments? Am I missing something?
Well, Bob, I know when I was on public safety, I would have meetings from time to time or try to have meetings from time to time with the fire department, you know, to make sure, you know, there wasn't something the borough could be helping them with. And, you know, just keeping, you know, in contact with, you know, the police too, you know, to make sure there weren't things that they wanted the borough to be doing, you know, it was kind of a whole group of people, you know, it wasn't just, you know, one person on Borough Council, you know, it it had to do with the police and it had to do with the fire company.
Right, police and fire, good points. I'll follow that advice and I will sort of stay in touch maybe with with those two different but related, you know, agencies in terms of their safety and security. And the other thing is this sometime, when I walk through town, I see some people that have stairwells going up and the side of the stairwells are wide open. So if a kid goes up that stairwell, that's a safety issue. Could fall off the side so they don't have any of the elements in between keep somebody falling off. That's a safety issue, but but it's also an inspection issue, so it's correlated. We probably need to look at that area also, but in terms of possibly inspections and sending a note saying that this is a safety issue, please take a look at your sidewalk. We're standing well going up on your side of your house. And make it correction, make it safe.
I'm sure that probably falls under what our codes enforcement officer would be looking for.
Correct.
Because that would fall under the international code, I'm sure.
Yes, it does.
We had talked about swearing in of civil service. Have we gotten any further with that?
You know, folks of office were prepared for the, each commissioner along with the guidelines, civil service guidelines. And the mayor is in process of contacting everyone to be sworn in.
I've had, I've had one contact me, that person will be sworn in before the end of this week. I've not yet heard from the other two. Actually, Scott, Scott Anderson is one of those. If you have an opportunity to give him a little boost.
Yep.
To contact me.
Sure. Will do. Alright, quality of life, Joey?
Thank you. First thing is, you know, it is the winter season and we always look out for, you know, people for snow removal and we need to be putting the bids out for that. And Fred, do you have a deadline for those bids?
December eleventh at ten AM.
Okay. And you will send out those bids, people?
Yeah, they've already gone out. We have one bid received.
Oh, okay, alright. So. Um, is there anything else I need to do on that at this point?
No, it'd be, we should have the results for the December fifteenth meeting.
Okay, thank you. The other thing was, we did have our resale. I want to thank everybody who did support that. We sold all of them but one, and that one was donated to the police department. And it looks like we're probably going to end up being able to give each organization two hundred fifty dollars. And, you know, I think that's pretty good. You know, we have, you know, pay our, you know, we have to pay back the money that we used to purchase them. Um, the other thing is coat drive is up and running. I have actually collected nine hundred and fifty dollars to purchase new coats. On Sunday, I went to, well, Saturday evening, I went to Walmart in Carlisle and they wouldn't do anything for me. But Sunday I went to Walmart in Chippensburg. And they wouldn't sell me the nice coats that are like three in one at a discount, but they had other ones there that they sold to me for fifteen dollars a piece. So I was able to get twenty four coats there on Sunday for fifteen dollars a piece. And I thought that was, you know, that was pretty good. So I still have about a little over six hundred dollars to to purchase more coats. I can't say enough about the money donations that came in for those because, you know, it's just really amazing and I am so grateful.
That's great, great work.
And the other thing is, we, you know, are going to have Santa come around on the same day as our coat drive. The Kuanis, I think it's the Kuanis that's coming down to Zion. Is that correct, Fred?
Yeah, they're doing stocking.
Yes, and then so they'll be at Zion for that time and then we do have a Santa that's going to go around on the gator that Jerry Gilbert is donating to the borough to use that bag. Just to greet kids and hand out candy canes. And if I'm not mistaken, what I saw in a message from Fred today that Todd said that there might be some toys too that can be distributed.
Yes.
Would be super, super nice. Um, you know, it, we might be COVID, but it's still Christmas time. And we have to bring some cheer to some of these children. The other thing, um, I know, I'm assuming that they're still having the red light, the red and blue with the toys for the kids through the police department.
Yes, we've about finalized the plans, Joey, to do a contactless distribution.
Right, but do you, are you going to need any help with wrapping or anything like that?
I will, I will ask Todd, the chief, how how they plan on handling that aspect of it and I'll let you know personally.
Okay, because I think that I can get some, you know, ladies that would help, you know, to do that. We'd be more than happy to do that. And the other thing is, what is everybody's thought on having a house decoration contest? You know, just to bring up some, you know, Christmas spirit with people decorating their homes. And told me that somebody was willing to donate some gift certificates to Sailors, which, you know, is always a nice little one sent at this time of the year.
That's a great idea.
If I get to go ahead, we'll make some plans. We'll get some rules for the contest and go from there.
Love the idea.
That's been done before.
Yes, it has, it has, yes. So, would that be okay?
Yes.
I have to, alright, hey. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Did I say, do you want a motion for that?
I think so. That would be good. That way we can get started on it.
Why don't you go ahead and make the motion and we'll.
I would like, I would like to make a motion that we have a porch decorating contest here in the Borough of Newville and we're, we'll, we'll have gift cards for sailors seventy five, fifty and twenty five. And rules will be in the making this week.
There's your motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any extensions? Forgot about those.
Oh, too bad. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for Joey?
Not, not, if Joey may know the answer. I didn't see it being done, but who did the decorations at the fountain because they're exceptional?
Sandy Brymesser, Wanda Barnhart, and there was another lady. But I'm not sure who that was.
Well, if you see them pass on my thanks because they're very nice.
Oh, thank you.
Could I, could I add to that? Wanda, this is her last. Could I uh, could I add to that? Wanda, this is her last year uh for decorating. And uh we should really do something to recognize her. Either a a certificate of appreciation or commendation, something should be given to Wanda. Not only has she decorated, I know she has bought a lot of the decorations out of her own pocket. Uh and she's enjoyed doing it, but uh she's lost uh some of the the ladies who had helped her in the past have gotten up in age and have health problems and she's had to give it up now. So we should do something that I think to recognize her.
Well, Fred, could we do that when we're doing the other recommend, the other ones here this month?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
So can we have a motion for that?
I make a motion that we um give a commendation to Wanda Barnhart.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Uh any other questions for Joey? Very good. Moving down to old business, there is none. Uh does anybody need uh anything else for new business? All right, future agenda items. I I understand we'll be voting on the ordinance twenty twenty oh nine. Uh we'll, we'll vote on the amendments to the uh police policy at the next meeting. Uh hopefully we'll have more information on the liquor ballot questions. Uh and we will, we should have some, some uh we'll, we'll vote on the engineer, or not the engineer, um engineer? No. The engineering contract for uh Parsley Street and we'll also have some, some bids opened uh for snow removal. Anything else? So that meeting is December fifteenth. There's also a meeting then on uh December the what day did we pick? Was it the eighth?
Eighth, I thought.
Yes.
So December eighth.
Five thirty PM.
Five thirty PM.
Yeah, so if you could do a a Zoom invitation, Scott.
Yep.
I'll send it out to the authority members.
Very good. Anything else for the go of the order?
Um I just want to invite everybody to my drive-through dinner on Sunday night. Starts at four o'clock. Down at Zion.
Anything else? Very good. Waiting on you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a great week.
Yep.
We all.